We're gonna, rather than wait for George, we're gonna get started. Uh, so I'm gonna open the meeting for the Wareham Planning Board for Thursday, September 10th. It is 6:16 PM. Uh, if there's anybody recording, um, please let us know. Please bear with me. This is my first time doing this. I'm usually sitting here listening to George do it, so. Um, present is myself, Michael King, Richard Swenson, Ken Buckland, and...
Russell.
Russell.
Mado.
Russell Mado. I can never remember your name, Russell. Give me another year, I'll remember it.
No problem.
Um, so with that, we'll call the meeting to order and get started with the public hearings on the zoning articles for the Fall Town Meeting.
So we, tonight, we have five articles to review. We're gonna start with, first with Wareham Village District, Re-Investment District, and then follow with the Drive-Thrus, Cannabis Testing Labs, Definition of Multifamily Dwellings, and Signed-Bylelaw Redrafting. So we'll start now with the Amendments to the Wareham Village WV1 District.
Um, I'm Richard Swenson. I am a member of this board, but I'm also a member of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority who is sponsoring this article. I have done a lot of public outreach on this, and I can go through this presentation again. It takes about ten to fifteen minutes if I go quickly, but I think probably most people have already seen it. If there, anyone who hasn't seen it, okay, let me go ahead then. So, the intent of this article is to create a sub-district within Wareham Village WV1 that is zoned to attract privately-funded mixed-use development projects while still maintaining the character and culture of New England Village. It's, um, the opinion of the WRA, based on our own observations, based on outside consultants who have worked with us, that the lack of reinvestment going on in the village is considerably due to the type of zoning that we have right now. And all these reports and experts that we've talked to have told us that we need to make some changes to attract privately-funded development projects, and that is what's motivating us to do this. So, WV1 is the orange in this map. It goes from the Narrows down to British Landing, up Main Street, all the way to Tremont. WV2 is in the green, this, we don't, uh, this article doesn't affect WV2 at all. The areas that we're calling our WV-1R, or the Subzone, is here in red. It goes from British Landing, not including British Landing, up the east side of Main Street, um, and on the, on the west side of Main Street, it goes from Toby Hospital to Sawyer Street. There's a little more detail about what that looks like. You can see that the, the top end of it on the east side of Main Street is just past the gas station that recently reopened. It sits by itself across from Sawyer Street. Stop me if anyone has any questions at any time. Why, why Wareham Village? I'm, I'm gonna reference three documents a couple times in this presentation. The first one's the Wareham Master Plan, which this board approved in January, that was put together with the help of the Planning Board, the Planning Office, Wareham Citizens, and SERPED. And in that master plan, it calls out five strategies that are specific to, um, improving downtown Wareham and commercial and mixed-use development in that area. I'm not gonna read them all, they're here, and, and all this information in this presentation is available on the town website. Wareham Economic Development Plan that the WRA had done last year in 2019 has a statement that is very applicable, where it calls out the Village Center in terms of its underwhelming investment in building upgrades with vacancies, derelict buildings, and empty lots, and it's ripe for substantial change. Then finally, in February this year, the, the WRA worked with Mass Development and the Urban Land Institute, who put together a technical advisory panel that came into Wareham and worked with major stakeholders in town, and they declared that the redevelopment of Wareham Village should be a priority, as it could be the cornerstone to revitalization of Wareham Village and Wareham as a whole. That's the why. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about mixed-use zoning and what it is. It's a horizontal and vertical combination of land use in a given area, where in that given area, almost any type of activity can take place, retail, commercial, office, residential, you can read them here yourself, where people live, work, and play, including outdoor spaces, plazas, and parks. So why should we consider mixed-use zoning? And this is one of the key messages I'm trying to deliver, that the, the development of modern, economically feasible projects in Wareham Village would face significant zoning challenges with our current zoning regulations. And those regulations, um, are not, but not limited to the density, the height, the uses, the parking, the setbacks, and the coverage. And developers are reluctant to try to do any development in a area where what they wanna do doesn't line up with the current zoning. Mixed-use zoning has been successfully implemented all across the country, all across the world, to revive communities and neighborhoods that haven't kept up with that modern economic strategy. So if we wanna get private developers to come into Wareham Village and come to our government with proposals on what they could do, it has to be economically feasible and profitable for them. And right now, with the zoning we have, that is not the case. So again, back to some of our documents that we researched in the Economic Development Plan from 2019. Five bullets are, that call out for high-density rental housing, additional retail and restaurant use, and office space, mixed-use projects, increased density and height, higher density and height, mixed-use residential, relaxed parking requirements, and construction of structured parking. In the ULI Technical Advisory Panel Report, almost mirror image, increase the density, adjust the heights, allow for mixed use. So with all that said, we have a vision of where we wanna go. We have the research that tells us what we need to do to get there, and so this is our first step to actually take a, a concrete step forward, and that is to, um, do these initiatives, and this is, this zoning article is the first one. We're gonna define WV1 as a reinvestment sub-district. We're going to make zoning changes in terms of use, lot areas, frontage, setback, height, building coverage, and impervious service coverage, design standard updates, parking standard updates, and air right over town land regulation opportunities, we're gonna talk about a little bit as well. I'm gonna quickly go through these. This is the current zoning uses in the, in the current column, and the WV-1R, where we're changing it. You can see we're restricting a little agricultural, we're adding some recreational, taking some recreational out as well. Residential is all being allowed, educational and institutional, we've made some changes as well. And the commercial uses, you can see that, um, one of the restrictions we put in was taking out motor vehicle service and sales in the village. We've added in conference centers, hotel, motel, brewery and taproom is there, light industrial uses are now there, accessory uses have also been updated. Here's some of the key ones, and this is in density and dimensional regulations. Minimum lot area lowered from seventy-five hundred to, to five thousand. Other residential use, like, as in apartment buildings, the, the first dwelling unit footprint has been changed from ten thousand square feet to a thousand. This is gonna allow a developer to come in and put basically more apartments on the same footprint, which is gonna make him, give him an opportunity to be more economically viable. Frontage changes we've made, lowered from seventy-five to fifty, setbacks we've changed, minimum side rear setbacks we left alone. Key one here is residential uses and height, we've raised from forty feet to sixty-five feet. Based on the type of architecture, that would probably be either a four or five-story number. Building coverage has changed from thirty percent to ninety percent, and max building coverage has changed from seventy to ninety. The interesting, one interest, one interesting observation that was made during our workshops that we had, we had two public and two town leadership ones, was that most of this sub-zone that we're targeting right now is, um, at, at greater than ninety percent now. So this, this doesn't really come across as a change to me, but more act, more of reality. So, this is the existing design standards from our zoning section 732. It's very, it's pretty high-level and pretty minimal, if you will. There is a new design standard document that is about four or five pages long. This is just the highlights of it here. Key, calling out the architecture of New England style, human-scale stuff, non-reflective, integrated parking, landscaping, utilities, um, anything that we do under our new zoning, I'll talk about this in a minute, as, as well goes through site, site plan review, where, um, the granting authority will be able to really control what any development project looks like down there. Here you can see the parking regulation updates, gone from one and a half or two per dwelling unit down to one, for the most part, or, um, the categories in blue. Site plan review, um, will be required for anything that we do here, and this is, this is where a lot of the control about what anything that goes on looks like, feels like, sounds like, um, is going, this is where we're gonna control it, right here, by this planning board. One thing that came up a lot is we wanna talk about air rights over town property. Most people know that Merchant's Way is owned by the town. It is in a flood zone. There are parking issues in the area, or, that could be restrictive. One of the ways to mitigate that is to lease air rights over Merchant's Way, where a developer could put parking on Merchant's Way, um, in the flood zone, and do his commercial development, his retail development, and residential development above it. This is just one opportunity. It's just a concept we want people to be aware of, that, um, probably come up if we can get it, if we can attract some developers to come in and try to do some work in the So this is just where the WRA is at. We've done all our workshops. We've had four of them, as I mentioned. We are basically final on our zoning change specifications. We, part of our project was to come up with an implementation methodology, and we have decided on the sub-district concept with site plan review. We plan on moving forward with a marketing campaign to keep people educated as to what we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish it prior to Fall Town Meeting, so the town meeting voters will come to town meeting, um, as educated as they possibly can, and we'll be submitting this, our plan is to submit this for that Fall 2020 Town Meeting. This is a timeline where we're at, all the things we've done. I'm gonna very quickly go through some examples here. This is Mashpee Commons, which I think is a, is something that we should strive to try to accomplish. You can see in these pictures here, um, the New England look, the retail on the first floor, uh, commercial or residential on the second, third floors, and the fourth floors, another look of the same thing, another look here as well of a different, different part. Here are some, uh, this is an example in Marblehead, an example in Salem, where they've done mixed use, another one in Marblehead. This is Newburyport, Massachusetts. This is Portland, Maine. This is Back Bay in Boston. This is an interesting one. We found a, a, a brand-new, modern mixed-use building in the bottom right, and I found a, a, um, older building that had been converted to mixed use, and on the upper left, they looked quite a bit alike. This is some non-New England-looking mixed use. You can see, uh, retail on the first floor, there's commercial on the second, and residential on the third and fourth, and another one of the same thing. Outdoor features that you find in mixed use often focus on outdoor dining, and, uh, parks or, um, recreation areas, and common spaces that are shared by different commercial properties. This one is in Nelson, New Zealand. Uh, the rest of this presentation is just, uh, information on the current zoning that you can go look at and see. If you go to the, sorry, if you go to our website, the Planning Board website, you can see this, you can see the links that we have for the Economic Development Strategy, the Master Plan, the Urban Land Institute Technical Advisory Panel Report, and as well as the actual article itself in its current state. So, that's all I have. Um, I guess if there's any public, we're open to the public now, so if anyone has comments, suggestions, critiques that they'd like to make, now is your opportunity.
Evening. Would you identify yourself for the camera and the...
Sure thing. My name's Aaron Perry, and I'm trying to start a brewery taproom on the very edge of Wareham Village 1. And we've come, again, we've come before the, the board before, and we got mixed-use variants, but we've run into some strange things, because we were, we were laid in as light manufacturing, so they wanted us to have a shower, and a urinal, and other weird things that were like throwbacks to time when people didn't have indoor plumbing, that are still on the books. So we've been trying to kind of wrestle through that and trying to get there, but I like, I like the progress. It looks awesome.
We've addressed that in the zoning by including the brewery and, and pub as a use that's, that's allowed within the district.
What's, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
We've, we've included the use as a, so it's no longer light manufacturing, it's this, it's a specific use option as well.
So, would that alleviate the stress of us having to dig up our entire foundation to put in a shower?
I don't know what the code requirements are. Dave Requena is looking at it now and, and trying to make a determination as to how the building code applies to your project.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, I can understand, like, way back when, that would be relevant, but nowadays, I can drive five miles down the street and go take a shower. Um, other than that, everything sounds really good.
Good to hear.
I just wanted to say, that stuff, and it looks like things are going in the right direction.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Hello, Jim and Ace, Cranberry Highway. I think mixed use is great, and it's really the organic growth of the village as it is, 'cause that's what's demonstrated with what's there. Um, you know, you have restaurants on the bottom floors, and some offices on the second floors, and you have some apartments there already. You already have some light manufacturing with the engine rebuilding and stuff. My concern is sixty-foot, um, heights for the buildings, that's like six stories, if I'm correct, and a lot of the documents you showed, Mashpee Commons, you're looking at three floors, maybe four, the architecture is nice. Uh, some of the bigger ones, it, you know, when you get sixty feet, they become looming and overwhelming, so I'm personally not in favor of that. Uh, density increases on the housing, I'd like to see an inclusionary aspect, either within that, indoor offsets made to accommodate for that, otherwise?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't...
What's that?
I don't, I don't understand.
Well, inclusionary zoning, so, um, when you increase the, the density regulation, you, you put more, more, um, pressure to create more affordable housing, so inclusionary brings the affordable housing into it, and if they don't wanna have that as part of the development, they have to do an offset somehow, some way, and there are ways you can achieve that. Uh, Mr. Buckland would be, uh, better suited to address that than myself, 'cause that is his, uh, in his area. Um, again, I, I think the idea of, um, allowing mixed use is great. Now, I mean, there's gonna have to be adjustments, I'm sure. Um, you know, going through all the tables, it takes a bit. I was looking at bowling alley, it says you need two per lane, and a tennis court, and I don't know, it's as of right, or recreational, indoor recreational, it says one per, or six per something, so I don't know how you get to that figure. I mean, there must be a calculation. I'm not sure. I looked at it, I'm like, well, why is this that and the other, you know? So again, I, I support the idea and the concept. I, I don't like the six stories, and I think there should be an affordable inclusionary aspect, one way or the other. I suggested this at previous meetings, I just wanted to reiterate. Thank you.
I, I tend to agree with you on the height requirement. I've given it some thought, and I think if you're gonna go to sixty feet, it should be at least by special permit, and maybe even a variance to achieve that, because Main Street is kinda narrow as it is, and put sixty feet at the curb, or back five feet is gonna be a little overbearing, I think. But, in some places, it may work, and the design may work, so you should be able to bend a little, but not, I don't think it's, you should make it as of right.
Part of the calculation of the height is based on what the design is gonna be looking like in the, in the downtown Main Street projects. Uh, what we have is a floodplain that has an elevation that, that exceeds the, uh, the elevation of Main Street itself, so it covers the Main Street. If we have parking underneath, uh, what we're doing is we're creating a podium, a concrete podium with the parking underneath and building above. So, we're starting at an elevation that's at least two feet above flood elevation before you can have construction in the, uh, in the area. Uh, our first floor of, of commercial is usually twelve to fifteen feet. Typically, most often fifteen feet high from floor to ceiling, so you're, you're, you're covering, uh, a little bit of that sixty, sixty-five feet, uh, in the, in the first, first few, few levels. Uh, so what that does is it creates units that are actually more like four stories high above the podium of the construction of the, of the, of the parking area underneath. One of the things that can be done about the, what's called the canyon effect of buildings along Main Street being, being high, is to have step backs, and these are included in the, in the design guidelines, where as the building goes up, the first floor or two, it cuts back away from the street and then goes up again. And so what happens is, when you're walking on the street, on the sidewalk, you only get the perception of a two-story building, and you won't see the, the total height of the building in that, in the, as you're walking on the sidewalk. So the effect is not as strong in, in the, in the height that's, that's there. Uh, those kind of design criteria can be used, including the scale of the, of the street level, uh, entrances and, and facades, where if you keep them on a level of, of a, of the scale of a person walking along the, the street, uh, so that it, it doesn't feel overwhelming to them, then you have a more, much more comfortable feeling about the street itself. Uh, we can point out some of those in some of the designs and the, and the construction of some units, uh, some buildings that we can show you and, and give you an idea of what that looks like. Uh, but the sixty-five feet is really necessary to get enough of the density and the square footage of, of rentable space, because parking isn't rentable space. Um, it, it just is, is an amenity to the, to the, the use of the, of the building. So we, we need enough density there to create the, uh, the income, the rents that are gonna make it worthwhile building the, the, the development on the Main Street areas.
Right, but we're, we're talking about, um, allowing airspace building over the town property, and the parking will be on town property, which it's already there, correct?
Some of the parking is on private land as well, right now, so it could be, it would be a combination of both, private and, and public, if, if they use the air rights.
Correct. And, so, I believe that the height of the roof is determined by the mean of the slope from the front to the back? Is that correct or incorrect?
That's right. It's the, it's the average of the grade.
It's gonna be from that point up sixty feet.
It's the average of the grade around.
Not, not just from the back. I just think that height is too much. I think it's a great idea to utilize parking underneath the buildings, as, as long as it can be utilized by whomever, you know, and if they, it's on their own property, then they have a private right to it. I think that's a great idea. Not against, I just think sixty feet is too much, even if you move it back. As you said, maybe in some circumstances, out by the highway, it's, it's, it's all right. I mean, it's kind of a looming building there over in, what's that, Redbrook?
Rosebrook.
Rosebrook. Um, but that's about sixty feet, correct?
That's a little over sixty, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's a looming structure, and if you could see that going down Main Street, that's, that's pretty, uh, pretty big. So that's my point, and, and, you know, the rest of it, you know, it's, it's all good, it's just, you know, there's some of the other things, you know, those couple of things for me. So, you know, no matter how you explain it, it still comes out to sixty feet, whether you do a setback, and then you're driving down the road, you're still gonna see that if you're walking down Merchant's Way, that's gonna be there. To me, it seems looming, maybe it wouldn't be, in, in reality, but I like the presentations which showed the more traditional village-like settings than the city-like center settings with the sixty feet. The village settings generally were three stories and, and four maximum, and that's what we have for max in the center now, isn't it? Four stories, not counting the elevator shaft?
It'd be approximately four stories, yeah, more like three stories, actually.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
So, one, one comment I'd like to make is that we're, we're in a balancing act here. The more attractive we can make, um, the zoning, and what I really mean by that is the more economically feasible a development project can be for a developer, um, the more, the more number of apartment units he can have, the more number of, of commercial spaces he can have, the more number of retail spaces he can have, all drives his business model into the positive, and the more positive we can make it, the better chance we're gonna get a developer to come look at the village. Right now, our zoning is kinda on the other end, and we're not getting anyone to look at it, as you all know. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. So, we need to be very careful, um, 'cause all, any restrictions we put on it will make it less attractive. And where is that fine line? I'm not a, a developer, so I don't know, but, um, I know three floors isn't enough, just based on what we've heard from our experts, so, um, I just wanna share that with people. We need to make Wareham Village very attractive for developers to come in so they can make some money. That's the only way we're gonna get that type of work we need done, done, so.
On inclusionary zoning, just to go over what, what that's all about, the, the idea is that as we develop housing units in town, the state calculates how many units we have and says, if we don't have ten percent as subsidized affordable, then we, then we are subject of Chapter forty B comprehensive permit applications coming in. So we get potentially something like Woodland, is it Woodland Cove, that the, down on Redbrook The, the forty, the forty B, ten percent requirement could be addressed if you say that every development that comes in includes ten percent of its units as affordable units, so that the, you maintain that, or try to reach the ten percent goal a little bit, so you're not subject to, to the applications coming under the comprehensive permit. However, even if we met ten percent, we'd be in jeopardy to, or potentially have it at forty B anyway, because the rest of the towns around the region don't have ten percent affordable housing either, and so we're subject to it regardless. But in, in the case of, of the inclusionary zoning, the ten percent of, of housing units that would be affordable, we could take as an option a fee in lieu of actual construction of the units that are, would be subsidized for the, for affordability, and use that money for other purposes and other projects that give us the kind of housing that we wanna have in town as well. So it's a, it's an option available, it's been commonly used in a lot of different towns around this, around the state, and has an op, we have an opportunity to use it here as well.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of mandating it. I think Rosebrook has broken the mold and shown people that people can make money at market rate. Wareham has long been the sol, the solution to everybody else's problems, and that needs to stop. We are already more affordable in all our surrounding towns, but we're paying the price for that. And we need to look at market rate and, and moving forward. There's enough ways to find subsidized housing without branding it with a handicap. I know the whole game with the ten percent, and it's a scam, it's a, it's written for developers. And affordable housing does not mean affordable, it means subsidized.
But, but it, excuse me, but again, it, it's a reality. So if you're gonna increase density, you should take, make an effort to offset the increased density by getting at least, try to get the ten percent or, or, or payment in lieu, and you have to be very careful about how you word it. So, so that's where I'm, I'm coming from, because you're, you're asking for increased density, so you can put more in that defined space. So if you wanna do that, I'm saying, well, that's gonna put more pressure on, on the numbers as they grow, in that smaller space with greater numbers, to, to reach that ten percent, like the number or not, it's a reality. So you can call it a game, a shell game, or this, or that. And I, I think if we show that we're making a good faith effort to reach that goal, we, we actually, even if we don't reach the ten percent, we get a, a get out of jail free card sort of for a couple of years, if we meet certain, certain goals and, and number counts moving towards the affordability. So if we don't do it, we just fall further behind. And, you know, you can say we're attractive, or this, that, there's probably reasons that we are, that I don't know. Thank you.
Jime Kabaachi from Main Street. I, I just wanna go on record of saying that I think sixty-five feet, not sixty feet, I think you said sixty-five feet?
We did.
Yeah, okay, I think sixty-five feet is bare minimum, I'd, I'd be in favor of a hundred. So, you know, there's both sides of that coin. It's, as the chairman so properly pointed out, Rosebrook proved it. If you build a nice place, you get, I don't wanna say nice people, because it sounds like we're, you know, trying to, we're trying to direct who's gonna live in our town, and we don't wanna do that. But I think if you build nice places on Main Street, next to a new hospital that's being renovated, down the street from a new middle school that's worth ninety million dollars, down the street from a new onset fire department that's worth eight or thirteen million dollars, and you're talking about all these wonderful, and gee whiz, the train track right behind Main Street is already ready for the tea to come to Wareham, and let executives live on Main Street and walk to the train and work in Boston. So I think we need to look at the big picture. If we try to, you know, I know there was a day that people yelled, "Get a horse," but they found out that the, you know, progress is progress. So I'm really very much in favor of what's being proposed here. I think sixty-five feet is the absolute minimum. If you could get it higher, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
After the COVID experience, they may be coming here to work and...
And looking for drive-in restaurants.
My name is Andy Costello, I'm a resident of Six Sawyer Street, I've lived here for almost fifty years, raised a family here, and very happy, and I'm probably a descendant, but I actually like the center of town. And it was my choice to stay here. I worked in Boston, I liked the character, I liked the people, I liked the openness, and I see this as a considerable change to the residential experience that we have right now. I am not against progress, I understand what you're trying to do, I don't like the empty storefronts more than anybody else, but I think you're going from one point to another point in an incredible acceleration. And the consequences for people that live there and have lived there for years, in my opinion, are gonna be dire. Increased traffic, increased noise, the livability factor is gonna be less. You're talking about people coming down right now, people aren't diving into apartment buildings, they're leaving the cities because they live in apartment buildings, and COVID has been apparently spreading through dense areas. So I, I'm not sure that, particularly with the times, it's the right thing to do. I have a major concern about traffic in the center of town, which has gotten considerably worse over the years. You've got an expanded emergency room, we're adding twenty-five thousand feet, ten thousand patients a year, you're gonna send ambulances one way down Main Street, cut off access to High Street, according to what I read in the paper today. Where's it all gonna go? How are the emergency vehicles, vehicles gonna get through? So from my point of view, as a resident living in the center of town, never mind the height, the height is, in my opinion, ridiculous, you, you change the whole nature of that center of town, the few historic buildings we have down there, which are very attractive right now, obviously developers would take those, and you'd have a, you know, your pitches are fine, but Mashpee Commons is not the center of Mashpee. It's a development. Rosebrook is not the center of Wareham, it's a development. Developments are structured for out-of-town areas. You know, we're not Marblehead, and we're not Newburyport, we don't even have the space to be either one of those communities, I've been there. I think you're just going too far, too fast. And, you know, this may benefit developers, well, that's fine, but I don't think the public purpose of this should be to benefit developers. You know, it's for the public, and I'm a member of the public, and quite frankly, I'm scared of this. And I guess the question would be, have any considerations made as far as traffic goes? Traffic? Has there been any plan in terms of managing traffic?
No, we don't have a project yet to, to compare the impact of traffic and what it might be.
Okay, so in terms of the new emergency room at the hospital, that hasn't been taken into consideration, the traffic flow of emergency vehicles, or anything of that nature?
Emergency vehicles are, are, come under a different access than, than what may occur from a development.
Has there been any consideration of runoff into the Wareham and Agawam rivers?
Yes.
Simply from the development, land runoff?
Yes, there has, yes, there has been, and we're talking about green infrastructure to address the impact of runoff in the, in development concepts.
Okay, and they would all be sued, presumably?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Last call.
John Sol at Sawyer Street, and I've, I'm, I hear what you're saying about a balancing act, when it comes to developers and people wanting to come in, but we're at one extreme now. I don't see how going to the total opposite end of the spectrum, and basically just selling out to the developers for the center of the town. There has to be, I would say, a happy medium, and I know in this time of this world, that's tough to come across, but I think what you're saying is extreme, and we could, there could be something that we could do in the middle of a hundred feet from the gentleman prior to me, or the sixty-five that you guys are saying right now. There, I mean, there's buildings down there that have been vacant for years, I don't know if people are sitting on them, they were once used, it's not like they were just, you know, nothing at one time. There's stuff down there, there's buildings falling apart on Merchant's Way now. I, you know, somebody can come in and fix those buildings up and make use of them, as is, or make some improvements instead of a total, you're talking about other cities, this is a center town, the center of a small town, it's not, I don't, you know, do, you're gonna do what you wanna do, and people are gonna make out on this, but not the actual public.
Anyone else? So I guess we move on to the next article?
Yes, let's do the marijuana testing lab, since we have the people from that.
Is this, do they wanna address the board on that, or how do you want to?
They'd like to present something on there.
All right, we'll, we'll go to item number three, amending the setback for cannabis testing labs to eliminate the state setback restriction from schools.
Thought it'd be good to start off by just making sure everyone understands the things that Smithers does, and essentially, we're a testing laboratory, and in that business, people send us chemicals to test. Those chemicals consist of pesticides, drugs, industrial chemicals, specialty chemicals, fine-use chemicals. And what do we do? We look at, we try to answer the questions of, where does the chemical go in the environment? What does the chemical break down to in the environment? What is the chemical? Not, almost all chemicals are not pure, so there's the chemical plus impurities in, in there, and so what, what else is in there? Does it do any harm to organisms or in the environment? And the last thing we do is, what's, what's in the food that we eat, the chemicals that are in the food that we eat? In the cannabis business, we would be looking at basically how much of a chemical or, or a metal might be in the cannabis, and, and we're kind of looking at how much of the THC content is, is in, in a product. So the cannabis business is exactly what we're doing, it's just a different, a different product. Next slide. So our challenge today is that the, the Cannabis Control Commission has a, as a requirement that all cannabis businesses, including testing labs, need to be at least five hundred feet from a school. And the, the, the distance is measured in the closest boundary, so essentially, we are across the street from, from Deacon School, so the width of Station Street is that distance, which is obviously less than five hundred feet. We, we believe that the, the analytical testing business is, is a, is a reasonable business to give an exemption to, for, for a number of solid and, and very important reasons. And the first reason is, is that we're dealing with very small quantities of cannabis. We're looking at about a teaspoon equivalent sample that we'd be testing, and we're looking at testing about eight of those samples a day. So eight teaspoons of cannabis products coming into our laboratory a day. Each one of these samples is, is, is broken up into many sub-samples, and so the entire sample is, is essentially consumed in the analysis process, and, and whatever wouldn't be consumed would be destroyed and, and legally disposed of. Our facility would have to be completely compliant with the security requirements of the Cannabis, Cannabis Control Commission, and, and that's all part of a licensing process and inspection process. But the town has, has got previous examples of reducing these buffer zones down to zero feet, and remember, we're a laboratory, a testing laboratory, we're not a, a growing facility, we're not a processing facility, we're not a retail establishment. And the last thing I think is that the Deacon School is probably in service, if everything goes as the original plan, is in service through the end of 2021, and then the school becomes decommissioned. And so the, the time that we'd be overlapping is, is five months of school time, maybe nine months, or, or six months of, six to nine months of total calendar time, would we be in business at the same time the school would be as a school? Next slide, please. Some site details, the, the darker squared H-shaped building is, is our laboratory, Station Street is the, is the, the street on the, on the right. If you go up to the top of the screen, just to the, what, basically where the road ends is, is where the Deacon School property starts, so we're, we are, we can see Deacon School from our, from our laboratory, no problems. If you notice on the bottom right, Empire V H is a red square, that's the area of the laboratory that we're proposing to put this cannabis business in. It's a, it's about a thousand square feet of space. It's, it's already there, so there's no expansion in our footprint, so we'll be working within the same footprint, just taking up or utilizing empty space right now. We don't have to add or, no impacts on parking, we've got ample parking to cover the, the few employees that we'd be looking to add to support that business. And, and that, in that one thousand square foot space, we would have to increase our security to meet the Cannabis Control Commission requirements for, for the, for the business. And just to kinda give people an, an idea of what that is, some of the security requirements, we'll, we've had consultants in, and it looks like we'll be adding seven, six to seven cameras, four cameras within the laboratory space to monitor people in the lab to make sure they're not, they're not moving material someplace where they shouldn't be moving it, plus external view cameras, watching for people coming in and out of that side of the facility. All the other employees in the facility would not have access to this, to this part of the building, other than our maintenance people, our emergency first aid people if you have a, an accident, and, and then the people who work in that area. And, and we also have a, a, an incredible requirement for securing the samples while they're waiting to be analyzed. So it's, it's, the samples are in tamper-proof containers when they're shipped to us, those are stored within a, a safe DEA-approved storage area, inside of a locked room, inside of a locked building. So it's a quite a bit of security before you actually get to the sample. Next slide, please. So again, just a little bit more information on the security, there's seven security cameras, the, the way we keep non-cannabis employees... The, the way we keep non-cannabis employees out of that is using RFID key cards. So we control access from other people within the facility. And that would include visitors in, in the other parts of our facility. There's a couple windows in that area. We'll either bar them, or they'll be just covered over and, and not be windows. Again, the storage is, the samples again are in a small, in a tamper-proof container, inside a DEA-approved cage, inside of a locked room, inside of a locked building. All, all of the employees that would work in that must undergo background check and fingerprinting and review by the Cannabis Control Commission. So a lot of security on actually the, the employees who you can hire for that facility. And, and then again, the, the standard alarm requirements for, for fire and, and security as well. Next slide. One of the, the concerns in the cannabis business is the prevention of diversions and nuisances. And so again, the, the security features cover a large part of that. Again, we have credentials, we would have to have credentialed employees, so they have to pass a security test and approval by the Cannabis Control Commission. Cannabis Control Commission will inspect and review our security procedures and operating plans for compliance. And that includes onsite inspections, tracking visitors both in and out of the property with logs and badges. Again, tamper-proof and child resistant packaging. The security plan is, is, was filed with the Wareham Police Department, so the police department is well aware of, of our operation. Again, the, the samples in tamper-proof containers inside a locked DEA cage, which is inside of a locked room, which is inside of a, a locked building for, for security. And a really important, a final piece here is that the, the deliveries of the samples to our site are through certified and credentialed carriers. These, these, these couriers have to be certified by the Cannabis Control Commission. And they do all their deliveries in unmarked vehicles. And so, you know, there'd be no vehicles, a big marijuana leaves on the side of them. And our signage doesn't change, the name is still Smithers, and none of the signage in our property changes. There'll be no external advertising with signage that says it's a cannabis testing Last slide, I believe. We believe that our organization provides a positive impact to the community. We've been in consistent operations since 1969 and a good partner with the town. We're looking at seven new jobs over the next five years to support this business, the type of high-paying jobs where, where I think we're trying to attract into, into Wareham. Again, strong community, community relationships with STEM, some STEM work in our schools. We provided a, a number of internships for our college students within town. And, and of course, we've, we've hired many local people for, for our business as well. And finally, I, I believe that cannabis business is kind of a blooming and growing business and is kind of a new and unsettled business. And having an organization like Smithers with the 50-plus years of experience in, in working in highly regulated ethical business practices, I think is a, is a real benefit to the cannabis industry as a whole, providing a little bit more of that stability. At this point, I'd be happy to entertain questions or...
What I want to do is also point out what the changes in the zoning are. What we do is in Section 390, have an amendment to 392.1, so that there's an exception made for an existing laboratory to have an independent marijuana testing facility within, by special permit. And then to add another Section 395.1, to have a buffer zone reduced to zero from a public or private school, where the proposed marijuana establishment is a, an independent marijuana testing laboratory. So we address it in two different changes in the zoning bylaw under Section 390, which is the marijuana section of the, of the zoning bylaws.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this?
Yeah, I'll comment. I'll comment. I've, and I'd gladly have a blood test, a urine test, a hair test, any kind of test anybody wants to have.
Would you just identify?
I'm not a user, or an abuser, or a drinker, or a stinker.
Yeah, would you identify yourself?
My name is Jim Echabachi. And I feel as though the marijuana laws that we have in our zoning bylaws right now are the result of a group of people sitting down and watching, and now I'm just painting a picture, watched a black and white version of Reefer Madness, and then came up with some bylaws. They're a little bit silly. If I can go anywhere in town and put a liquor store, or a pharmacy, or a barber shop, I think the same thing should apply to a marijuana dispensary. They're innocuous. I, I understand the fear of something unknown coming into town. We needed a bylaw. I suggest you strongly look at your current bylaw and realize there's a lot of silliness in it. 1,500 feet apart, three different stores. Why? I don't care if they're three on the same block, in the same building, under the same roof. That's capitalism. That's competition. Setting them 1,500 feet apart doesn't make them more or less profitable, doesn't make them, you know, it's just, I suggest that the bylaw be looked at very strongly. I think 90% of it could be stricken. Sure, we want to have some control over our dispensaries, but now we've had a year or two with it. Does it really matter if a medical dispensary is next door to the hospital? Does it really matter? Is it really important that the only zoning in town, that a medical marijuana dispensary is the same zoning that we put a school in? I don't think so. Somebody has a medical marijuana need, if they buy it at Wareham Crossing or Cranberry Plaza, what's the difference? So that's, that's my feeling. I, I urge you guys to take a look at it seriously. And thank you for your time.
Anyone else? You say, I think this is a, in my opinion, it's a pretty reasonable request to fit the circumstances, so. If there's no further...
I would like to comment that I think that, you know, we, we do need to have some regulation as far as alcohol and marijuana go, moving forward, because it's, they're both here to stay, you know? But I would say that in terms of schools involving children, we should, we should keep the integrity of the setback, and we should treat both accordingly the same. And...
Excuse me. The current bylaw says the only place it can be is the same place you can build a school. Sorry.
Just, just a correction. The only thing that's limited to the institutional district is medicinal marijuana. That's the only thing that's confined. You have two other sites in the zoning...
I'm sorry. It was inappropriate, but thank you.
But, but you have two other sites that have been locally approved, and they're hanging because the commission statewide hasn't acted.
I got it.
So I don't think we, we're not the ones at fault for not having more places around.
Well...
And again, this is testing. This is not for retail. This is not production. This is testing of products within an existing lab. That's what we're looking to do.
With it being pre-existing non-conforming, that is a different setting than allowing for people to just open up a shop near a school. But what's going to happen is, people are going to read it differently, and they're going to say, in Wareham, they have cannabis testing labs next to their schools. That's what's going to happen. So I think that we should just be very careful about just automatically allowing things just because. I think that what would be most appropriate would be to allow the pre-existing non-conforming and give a temporary license while the school is still there, because it's closing anyway. And so then therefore, our bylaws are not interrupted, the integrity of our setbacks are not interrupted, moving forward. And some, some other developer that wants to come in with that sort of lab would have to go through all the special permitting and sit before the board before they were just allowed to because of us granting a permit and just lifting the bylaw.
Well, this is site-specific, correct, Ken?
Yes, it is. There's no other, there's no other testing lab next to a school anywhere in town.
Right.
Today.
Today.
But it...
And this applies only to existing labs, so that this would apply to only one, one instance?
That's why I definitely think it's, it works, it's fine. It fits in. It's there, it's pre-existing. It's, it's obviously not for any uses that are, you know, detrimental to the community. I don't know how much is in the exhaust that comes out of that building near a school, you know, that's parts per billion, that's very scientific, I don't understand that. But when you combine chemicals with chemicals, I mean, obviously, there are issues there. But going back to what, what George said earlier, Wareham shouldn't be the place where people come to do things they can't do in the surrounding towns. So we just should take a close look at it.
Anyone else? Which one would you like to do next?
Mind your drive-throughs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, to amend Table 320 for all commercial drive-throughs, and by expanding the use of the strip commercial district as allowed by, why is that written that way? Expanding the use to commercials.
That's, that's the article. It's amending Article 320, the table of principal uses. There are two lines in the existing table under commercial uses for restaurant drive-through and non-food drive-in drive-through establishment. And what's being proposed is in the CS, which is the commercial strip district column, that both lines would be changed from N, which is not permitted, to SPZ, which is Special Permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then in, in Section 386, where the definition or the description of strip commercial and the, the drive-through restaurant is included, where it would be changed so to say, where it says, "Drive-through restaurant, non-food, drive-through establishment," be permitted into general commercial, and we add, "and strip commercial CS district by special permit issued after the following conditions are met." And then there are a list of conditions in the existing law about circulation, traffic, and trash that are requirements for issuing a special permit.
This was recommended by the Board of Appeals, and their intent is to simplify the process and, and cut down a step to, to a property that complies with the standards and not have to go through a, a special permit process or a variance...
Variance.
Variance process, which is a higher standard than... Any comments or concerns on? Hearing none? What do we got?
Attached lines.
Did you cover number four already?
I didn't.
Item number four, amending Section 340.4 to clarify the definitions. This was to better define what a multifamily or what a duplex would be. So we don't have 140-foot connections from one side of a duplex to another.
I was wondering who was going to bring that up.
You know what we're all thinking. The intent of it is to have a multifamily, though the walls need to be attached somewhere. It's probably, the verbiage is probably technical, but we found the need to accomplish this. And lastly, if there's no one that wants to comment on that, lastly, is amending the sign bylaw to reflect the recommendations of the State Attorney General's Office when the last, I don't know if it was the initial change in the sign bylaw, or one of the...
Yes, there was a proposed amendment that got passed by town meeting.
You cannot, you cannot discriminate against signage due to their content, basically. You have to treat all signs the same, regardless of what they say. So you can, you can govern size, shape, positioning, but you cannot reject a sign because of content, be it political, religious, or anything. So that's basically what we're doing, is adjusting the town bylaw to be in step with the AG's office.
Unless the content's offensive or that type, you know?
Oh, these days, that doesn't seem to matter, but not, yeah. At least here, it isn't that way, anyway. At least I haven't seen it that way. And that's it for the zoning bylaw changes that we've proposed for this year's Fall Town Meeting. Hope we have a place to have it, and we can all attend in safety. Is that the whole thing?
That's the whole thing.
That's it. I would look for, unless you have more comments or...
So a motion to close the public hearing?
Sounds like a plan. Is there a second? A second? Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.